Okay, the hour is six o'clock on the east coast, four o'clock here in Park City. Like to call the planning board meeting of January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five to order. Persons who wish to do so are invited to view the meeting at the Gloucester website or join by phone. And for, you know, you can join through the Gloucester website and guidance for the meeting remotely. So calling me in order introduction to planning board staff and board members. We got Greg Katamatory on top. My name is Rick Noonan on the chair. Move down here past all of our stable of consultants. We have Sean Henry, Doug Cook. And we have David. I don't know. Haven't seen David lately. But he's with us and we're waiting on Jane Ramsden, our vice chair, and Beverly Bookin is going to be absent this evening. So if you could put the remote or the turn that backup, I'm sorry, Greg.
Sure, sorry. I think I just got it. I was checking on a message from Alex. Hold on one second.
Okay.
There we go.
So this is, you know, a special meeting. It's a one agenda item. So it's comprehensive plan update. Laura Smead from JM Goldson to lead the review of the comprehensive plan draft core theme strategies. And outline for the next phase of public engagement. So I am going to turn it over to Laura, unless Jen has some starting off words. The floor is yours.
Yep, the floor is Laura's. Thank you.
Terrific.
Yeah, thanks. Nice to see you all again. Just you saw us all, I think, last in in person in October. But just a reminder, we have Juliet Walker here with Kilderson, our transportation expert, Emily Innes with Innes Associates, our zoning expert. Jen and I are on all the other topics and then Anne, except for Anne Ferbush from Cambridge Econometrics with the Economic Development. And I see Jane is joining. Yay. So tonight, let me, we've gone through a lot of work. So let's, let's get into it. I'm excited to be at this stage with you all. It's a, it's a really a nice inflection moment. It's kind of we're approaching the end of phase three. We're really getting into the home stretch and this is, I hope, going to be a productive meeting and we'll be able to work through any remaining issues either, either tonight or possibly on February sixth if needed. So tonight, we want to review the revised draft strategy list. Mainly, we're going to be having a facilitated discussion on the strategies that are remaining kind of in the middle, where people still had more questions about them. They still seemed like there wasn't a clear consensus on whether or not it should wind up being in the ultimately in the comprehensive plan. And whether it's tonight or February sixth, confirming that draft shortlist, like confirming, yep, these are the ones that are in. These are the ones that are out and covering the next steps when we, when we get there. So just a reminder what we've done already for vetting those draft strategy ideas. We reviewed them all with you in October, answered questions and things at that time. And then we had five technical working sessions, one for each of the four themes. Many of you were there and participated in those. We summarized those results for you and gave them to, to you in November. And then we had took it on the road. We met with five different boards and committees among the staff and different consultants met with different boards and committees to further vet strategies. And we got the opinions of those boards and committees on a subset of the strategies that were most important to them. And also collected some more strategy ideas from those boards and committees. And then in January, we summarized and sorted and did some revising and wordsmithing and some reorganization after we kind of took all the feedback in and tried to put together something that we thought was going to document what we did, but also provide you with a little bit more of a clear list for what we're actually kind of remaining to discuss tonight. So this is kind of where we were at, at the end of the both the technical working sessions and the road shows. There was about thirty two strategies left in the middle and thirty seven of very similar number of new strategy ideas. And then you took the pre-work survey. All of you did your homework. You all did such a good job, except for Beverly, who is on vacation. So we can't, you know, but falter too much on that. Mainly, one, one other thing that we do at this stage is look at, do those, you know, that kind of iterative process. We go back and think, okay, are there, are there, are the, do the themes and the goals still make sense? And one of the things that, that we noticed as consultants and the staff noticed was that there wasn't a lot of strategies left in, in the core theme that was on tourism. And we thought it made sense and also a lot of overlap in those themes. So we thought it made sense to suggest and recommend that core themes three and four be combined into one. We also received a new goal recommendation around capital improvement planning. And with some strategies suggested under that goal, we're also going to be meeting with the mayor's office a little bit later this month, too, to, you know, make sure that language is, is what that office would like. But and then some strategies got reorganized within existing goals where we were looking like, oh, this, maybe this really is climate change and belongs over here. This is more recreation belongs over there. So there was a little bit of that and we tried to have a messy word document. We were tracking all the changes that we were doing and marking up kind of who made what wordsmithing recommendation and so forth. But also have a, you know, more of a clean version for you to review at the end of the day and, and know kind of where things were at. So you took your, your pre-work survey. I, I crunched the numbers today. We have a few more to on the more on the elimination pile. There was a number of them that the vast majority of you, when we averaged the numbers, it looked like this one is probably a no go. More of them that wound up in the shortlist bucket where there was general consensus that it was a four more. Essentially, it was like positively received. And that left us with fifteen, which is great because that discussion list got a little smaller. And in terms of the new ideas, understandably, most of the vast majority of those, at least one of you wanted to discuss. So there are really only four of those new ideas that everybody was like, no, like this, nah, it's kind of a no non-starter. So that is probably where the bulk of our discussion is going to wind up being is maybe on some of those new strategy ideas. So tonight, that this is kind of recaps to what I just said. There's the fourteen original strategies and the new ideas. So in a minute here, I'm going to stop sharing this screen and I'll just pull up kind of a, a word document really. And I would like us to, to prioritize, actually, if I can, core themes one and four. Because if the discussion goes long tonight and we need to continue it to February sixth, I want to take advantage of the consultants in the virtual room tonight. And those are the core themes that are most relevant to them. But just so you know, at the end of that discussion, we can circle back and just confirm the shortlist for removal. The, and the what's going in, not the shortlist removal, they eliminate strategies, the shortlist. And really anything else and get into next steps. But I think I might even just cover next steps right now before we get into the long discussion, if I can, just to kind of get through it. It's not too many. Once we do arrive at that strategy shortlist, we would like to present, have a, a presentation to the, the city council like we've done at the end of kind of every phase, just to keep them in the loop on where we're at with things. And we also have internally sent a future land use vision, sort of future land use maps to staff. We're doing some internal back and forth right now and getting their review on it. But we hope to be able to present that to that draft to you at your next meeting on February twentieth. And then we are meeting with department managers on March sixth to facilitate presentation on the strategy shortlist. And there it's less about, is this, because they've been involved kind of all along and kept in the loop. But it's, it's more about feasibility. It's not on, should this be in or out of the plan? It's what do you need to make this happen? Is this assigned to the right department? Is this on the right timeline? And, and where the, what would it take for to actually implement this strategy for your department? And what are the priorities? So we'll get their feedback. We'll just do a presentation and then kind of leave it with them for a week and gather comments back from them. And we're also going to be putting together a community survey on just actually the goals. We wanted to take advantage of the, the mayor's state of the city speeches that are happening actually starting this week. So, and also there's, there's a lot of strategies to go through. So we thought it would make best sense to ask the community which goals in each core theme are their top, are the top priority for them for implementation. And be able to feature that then in the, in the final plan and kind of highlight whatever goals comprise the top as being the most important to the community. And that will start, you know, late January and run through mid-March. And so in March twentieth is when I think we're going to be really able to put everything all together for you with, you know, vision, core theme, goals, final strategy list, most important strategies, what we heard from the department manager meeting, all of that good stuff all together on March twentieth. So without further ado, unless there are questions on that, I'll pull up the, the word document and we'll start getting into the weeds.
And I'd ask folks, obviously, we're in the remote setting and I can't see everybody. So if you do have a question, just, you know, it's tough to raise your hand when I can't see you. So just say, you know, hi, I'm Jane. I have a question. I wasn't picking on you, Jane. I don't think we have any questions at this point, Laura, if you want to move forward.
Okay. So this word document is very similar to the clean strategy list that you all reviewed for this meeting. But now it reflects the results of the pre-work survey. So where this is, I'm a kind of redlined already. So what I did was if it's, if it's on the shortlist, we think it's highlighted in green. If it's on the list for discussion, it's highlighted in yellow, including the new strategy ideas. And if it's changed in some way, I marked it for its new coloring, like this one, one C six. In the pre-work survey, that averaged out to be a four. There's general consensus that that should be on the shortlist. And so I just marked it with a comment that this averaged four in the pre-work and now it's colored green. But I at least want to highlight it in case there's, you know, people want to take issue with any particular thing and want to have a discussion about anything, we can definitely do that. And then, of course, anything is yellow is still on the list for figuring out what to do with it. Okay, so if that makes sense, let's just kind of begin at the beginning of core theme one, and then we'll see how far we get and then jump to core theme four. Does that sound like a plan? Okay, so the first new strategy ideas that we have are under this goal one A, which is to capitalize upon emerging opportunities to grow the blue economy, working waterfront and ocean related industries. There were a few new strategy ideas mainly from the economic development, is it improvement committee, EDIC? Discussion with Anne Ferbush.
The Economic Development Industrial Corporation.
Thank you. Yeah, the acronyms are going to kill me. So one is to activate the Jodre State Fish Pier through public private partnership for seafood processing, aquaculture and other allowable water dependent uses. One is to, and I did take a little bit of leeway here on this one. I think the comment was really, if I understood it right, and they want, are interested in activating the I four C two site. And so I found the, the, this twenty twenty ten concept proposal that had been done for it and interpreted that as the sort of wanting to implement the next steps for that Gloucester Harbor Innovation Center at that site. Since there already been some planning work, it looks like around that. So, you know, there's no, no ego here. If there's anything I said in there that should be wordsmithed, please let me know. And then the last one is sort of per the harbor plan, evaluate FEMA flood maps and the federal navigational channel to tailor the inner harbor or lobster cove to the current and future working waterfront needs.
And so Laura, here you're looking for feedback on these strategies or the new strategy.
Yes, yes, their new strategy ideas, they were flagged by at least one planning board member as wanting to be discussed. Some of them were flagged by multiple. And so we're really just having a discussion. Do you feel like they should be in the shortlist or not in the shortlist? Or if they're in the shortlist, should they be wordsmithed in some way?
I don't think the inner harbor is lobster cove, or, or did you? Did you mean a different inner harbor?
I think on this one, we were taking the literal words from what?
So I think, I think there's a little bit of two things going on here. And I, I imagine this may have been, if this was input from the EDIC meeting, it was probably something that Tom Balf had introduced. So there's two pieces. There's one that's looking at the, there, there's an opportunity to look at the federal channel and there's what's called the project area. This is highly technical. It's maybe not necessarily a strategy. It's more like a implementation task relating to facilitating opportunities for expanded dockage. The other piece of looking at the FEMA designation is, is, they're kind of two separate things. So the reason why lobster cove was identified was that had occurred in the past where there was an evaluation of basically the channel and the Army Corps designation. If you go through that process and kind of de-designate a certain area, it becomes under more local control. So it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of specifics in here. I'm trying to figure out if there might be a better way to, to more generalize that to the strategy of ensuring that, you know, FEMA flood designations are appropriate to stimulate economic development and evaluate the federal project area to, for, you know, for the potential for expanding dockage. So I think if people think these ideas should be in as strategies, I think it just needs to be reworked to be maybe a little bit less specific and more around the strategy. And these are kind of like the actual implementation steps.
Yeah, so Laura, I, I have trouble, the whole survey that I did, this is the trouble that I had. These seem like action items to me rather than strategies. And so like, you know, if your goal is reduce the amount of virus going around, it seems like your strategy would be make everybody wash their hands more often. And your action item would be put a sign in all the bathrooms to tell people to wash their hands. And so this feels very specific, as do a lot of the others, which is why I had trouble with them. And also, so something like activate the Jodre Fish Pier through public private partnership, like, I don't know what that means. Sounds good, but does it cost the city of Gloucester money? I mean, I'm not, I don't want to make a recommendation in a vacuum here and just be like, this is what we should do. Doesn't matter if it costs two million dollars, which we don't have. So why, I have trouble with all of these because they're so specific.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point, Jane. A lot of the additional strategy ideas that came from additional meetings that were held with boards and committees to just, you know, ensure that nothing was missing. I think just where, yeah, being a participant in a lot of those meetings, I think where their head was at was just into specifics. So they were kind of laser focused. I think our work is to look at some of these ideas that are mentioned that are, like you said, on the action level and kind of draw it back up to the strategy level and see if it's worth incorporating into the plan. I think all three of these have a little, are too specific. I was going to mention the one A eight. Should I think, I think there should be a recommendation on activating and establishing a vision for both the Jodre State Fish Pier as well as the I four C two site. But these are too specific of details to allow for a community process to establish a vision for what that activation looks like.
Thanks, I agree.
Right. And I, I guess the way I view these, these three items are, you know, again, very, very specific. But overall, taken together, it's, it's, it would be a step in the right direction, right?
I totally agree. I just don't know what it means.
Well, I mean, the fish pier is not necessarily, you know, a hundred percent occupied, right? I mean, everybody's.
I don't mean that. I just mean, I don't understand what the ramifications are. Like, I understand each of the steps, but I just, there's a lot more to be thought about before we just go activate the Jodre, Jodre State Fish Pier.
Yeah, so I, I think for that one, it should be about creating a community supported vision for the future of the fish pier. I think public private partnership is right. Seafood processing, aquaculture and, and water dependent uses are right. I think talking about consistency with the harbor plan is important for this recommendation and working with mass development since they own the pier and would, would need to be involved. And I think making sure the appropriate stakeholders are at the table for any kind of process to establish a vision there would be the important things to mention at the strategy level.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering to Jane's point, is there, in the way that this gets, gets presented, are, are there strategies and then are there action steps? And is that the way that JM Goldson is thinking about this? Should they, should they be separate things as opposed to everything being put into strategies?
So we do at a strategy level, oh, and Jen has her hand raised as well. I mean, go ahead, Jen, if you want to talk through strategy versus implementation matrix.
Yeah, you know, where we, where we leave this off into the hands of the, the, the multiple department managers and boards and whatnot who are going to be implementing in it, we basically give you the strategy. Sometimes, Jane, they may read as very specific if that's something that came out of the community process. But it's essentially up to a combination of the, you know, the, the boards and committees that will ultimately be doing these things and the department managers to create, well, how are we really going to do this? What are our action items? But that's not something that we, we would be scoped to include in the basic plan that we'll give you.
And you, you'll see, you know, all the other recommendations that, that were developed over a long period of time are not as specific unless there's something that, that needs to be called out. So it's really just these additional ideas that came in here through the boards and committee meetings that we had. So I think you'll notice those ones are more specific and need to be brought up to the strategy level.
And Jane, I think you made a good point, too, about making sure that the strategies are targeted at the city. Because, you know, like you say, activate the state pier. Well, what does that mean for the city? So making sure as we review these, I noticed, you know, I was facilitating the discussion with EDIC. And a lot of people have really great ideas about what they would like to have happen. But not all of those are things that the city is in the position to do. So making sure that we're focusing on action items for the, for the city.
And so, you know, I think the city's role in, in those two strategy ideas is really to facilitate a public process to, to get community buy-in for a vision. So I think those recommendations should really be emphasizing that. For the recommendation around I four C two, we, we definitely need to remove the mention of the Gloucester Harbor Innovation Center. Because there's, there's been a lot of concepts proposed for the site and they were proposed a very long time ago. I think any process to find what the community would like to see there should build upon previous planning efforts and all the ideas that have been provided. There's been a lot of work to look at the feasibility of the site, whether it could, could handle a development and so forth. So that I think could be referenced. But yeah, those first two recommendations, I think, are really about facilitating a community process for a vision at both those sites.
Which is strategy language as opposed to activate and implement.
Yeah, I think the EDIC is just kind of action oriented and they couldn't help themselves.
I mean, and they should be, just not sure it belongs in that form in a, in a strategy plan, in a master plan. And I'm going to recuse myself from the lobster cove thing because that's where I live and I don't want FEMA here. Or I don't, and I don't want it to be a federal navigation channel because that would make it where I swim off my dock not very fun.
So it sounds like people are, the planning board is positive about these concepts. It's just a matter of bringing wordsmithing them to be the right level and focused at what the city can do related to facilitating a public process and a vision for these locations. But that these locations are still valuable places to kind of mention for economic development. Is that fair?
I think so.
Okay, so are we ready to move on to the next?
I just have a question.
Sure.
How does that relate back to the harbor plan? Does it all tie into that? I mean, it kind of makes sense to go from that effort.
Yeah, so I think that Alex mentioned that they should, they should be cross-referenced, right? We should mention that it would be consistent with the harbor plan. Yeah, and I made a little note of that. So we can go back to the, anything that's, you know, remaining to be discussed. If we need to, we can do any kind of like final wordsmithing language stuff on February sixth potentially. So I might want to, you know, take notes tonight, see how far we get and then present, you know, okay, how's this language? Meeting.
And Laura, if you just want to make a note behind lobster cove, lobster cove is a swamp on the western side of the Cape. It's not in the inner harbor of the working south or north channel of.
Okay.
So Shane can go swimming.
All right, I can comment on the, on the strategy, if it take, if you take out lobster cove. I mean, it really isn't the inner harbor. It's completely different. But I understand why it's there because the federal navigation channel might, may or may not reach into there. So.
Okay.
The discussion on moving the federal channel further east has always been predicated off of, you know, essentially the building center and I, it's not SmithCo, but there's another term for it. So.
All right, I, I can follow up offline, you know, with, with staff and stuff and make sure we get the right language. But I, I think I have a good understanding of what we're doing with those strategies. All right, so the next one that's still in the middle is under goal one C, encouraging adequate housing supply of all types, sizes and costs. The strategy is to add design review process or site plan review and special permits to create development standards and design guidelines for the review process. Identify specific districts such as the downtown or uses such as mixed use for which design review is appropriate. And this one was really, you know, in the middle. And I'll also mention that this one above it was in the middle, but there was general agreement to include it.
Can you just clarify whether you mean, you mean section four in the previous one and section six in the next one? Or are they both supposed to be the same section?
Oh, look at that. Yeah, that's a, oh, that should be the same. Thank you for catching that.
Oh, well, that's what threw me off because I was like, oh, we're talking about section four. Oh, there's a section six.
Yeah, and, and if that's the case, I think those could be combined to say, you know, put all the, the zoning definitions into that section of the zoning ordinance. And, you know, address the recommend, make sure they're consistent with the recommendations of the complaint. I think that could just be one recommendation if, if that's referring to.
But again, you know, like, that's an action item. And what it really ought to say is review the zoning ordinance for, you know, consistency and efficiency. That's the strategy, right? Moving the definitions is pretty specific.
Yeah, I agree. It could be more broad in terms of just an audit of the zoning ordinance for consistency with the plan.
I didn't look up section, I don't know where section four came from. I don't know where the definitions are right now. You know, I didn't look that up and, and think about it. I don't even know where it came from. Yeah, anyway.
I would agree with the statement that Alex just made. It's probably more.
I would agree with the statement that Alex just made. It's probably more. An, an audit for um, consistency and um, organization. Because there are definitely a couple of schools of thought here. There are a number of definitions that are in section three. That were specifically moved. Back in two thousand eight um, to that section because there was concern that people weren't going to grasp all that. As it related to um, non-conforming lots and a lot of things that are discussed in that section. So they were pulled from six and moved into three. So there's, there's definitely a. A, is it working the way it should be? So it's more of an audit for kind of like organization and function.
And efficiency.
Yep.
Um, Emily, do you have any thoughts on? On the, on these strategies?
Yeah, thanks Laura. Um, I think uh, that the higher level goal of. What you just said about reorganizing for efficiency, for um, clarity. Uh, another common strategy at this point or, or common um, uh. Component of uh, the implementation plan would just be to make sure that, and I think I saw it further, further down as I was. Uh, doing a, a re-review of the materials. Is uh, making sure that you align the zoning to the recommendations of comprehensive plan. Um, so those two could end up being grouped together. Um, uh, under, under one portion of this, but that's kind of the higher level. And then I think you're right. Moving the definitions, adding the definitions, other components like that start becoming. Um, actions within that larger strategy.
So with regard to design standards in site plan review, I'm very mixed about that because. Or design review process, because I think it's really subjective. It's really hard to create. I'd love to have it. Would I love to have it? I'd love to have it and, but. Um, I'm not sure it's fair or right. And I, I think it might take more discussion and so. You know, just a recommendation to add design review process again, might be too specific, like maybe we should review. Um, whether or not we should have a design review process. What, I mean, Greg, what do you think about design?
I mean, I think, I think it isn't, I think it would be valuable. I mean, there's a lot of situations where, you know, an applicant is kind of. Not, not shadow boxing, but they're, but they're left with some very generalized um, guidelines rather than standards. So there's definitely some room there. Um, but I think, I think in evaluate is probably the word. Rather than saying just do it, which makes it sound like, you know, it's on the list. We have to check off and do it. Um, it's, it's something that has to be carefully considered. There's thresholds, you know, how, how far do we go? Um, but it's, but it's definitely some, something we've heard. Um, and I think it's, it's not just from the public. It's also just from the process in general to be fair to everybody involved. Um, so I, I would say that moving it to evaluation is probably the right way.
Okay, so I took an attempt at wordsmithing here. Um, if it moves to more of a level of, you know, you're, you're going to discuss it and evaluate whether or not it's something you actually want to do and get into the specifics of what it would look like. Is that then a strategy that you would like to include in the plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
For me, yes.
And I, I think that the, uh, you know, again, with Jane's concern about. You know, taking on the evaluation process and what goes into site plan review or a design review. Um, but yes, if we, if we had those. You know, those barriers so the, the applicant could look and say, yes, okay, here are the standards within design review. This is what we're going to be looking for. It, it reduces the amount of time and work that an applicant would have to put into something to get approved, right? And so, and again, it's, you know, we just went through one recently. And it, it's entirely subjective. You ask five people, you get ten different opinions, right? So if we had that standard, it would make everybody's job a little easier, I believe. But the, it takes a little while and a little, a lot of work to sort of establish those standards, right?
Also, I'd be more comfortable if you took out. Um, such as the downtown. And then I didn't know if that or is supposed to be four. But um.
Okay.
And so identify specific districts or uses such as mixed use for which design. Yeah, I mean, that's fine, but I'm, we can't be targeting. Right now, we cannot be targeting downtown for multifamily.
Design standards is the way to go.
Yeah.
On, on developing our design standards.
Yeah.
To not guideline standards, do you want to put it, it right in the bylaw?
Um, if I may, uh, one of the, there are the terms that I typically use are. Uh, and Laura, this goes to your point. Um, I usually use development standards for what goes in the bylaw. And then design guidelines for that outside document. Or you can adopt and use, um, just sometimes design guidelines is used for everything and I just find breaking it up like that helps with clarity.
Yeah, that's, that's where, that's exactly what I was getting at. I'm like, are we baking it into the bylaw? Are we having a separate document or are we kind of doing both? It sounds like you're doing both and one might refer to the other. Okay. Good. Okay, are we ready to move it along?
A question about that, which is. In one C seven, we say, we now say discuss and evaluate whether to, and then below that we say consider and below that we say review. Should we be consistent? And in one C seven and just say, consider adding design review. Because I look at this and go, what's the difference between these things? Let's have some consistent language.
Makes no difference to me.
Yeah, that's fine.
David, do you like to consider things or evaluate things?
I like to evaluate them.
I like to evaluate. Consider is like, consider feels a little bit less committal to actually doing it.
That's, that's the point, right, which is.
I like evaluate. It's good action.
Yeah, exactly.
And evaluate in one C nine also.
And, yeah, and then one C seven that has that.
Okay.
One C twelve, update the housing production plan. We talked about that at our last meeting, so that's good.
I know, I, it's an action item, just saying, but that's fine because it's, we need to do it anyway. Rather than a strategy.
Alright, so goal one D has a few here. Um, so goal one D is adopt policies and programs to promote housing stability for residents at all life stages. Prioritizing young adults, families and older adults. Um, there's a few in the middle from the original list and there are a couple new ideas that you wanted to discuss. So the first one is to provide funding and support to social services and housing agencies to create new day shelters, transitional housing. Supportive services and permanent supportive housing.
So I think, who would want, not want to do that, except where do you get funding? I mean, that's just like pretty scary, right? Like.
So we, in our.
And where does it come from?
Yeah, so we always in the implementation matrix where we can identify funding sources, we put resources and funding sources for you in that implementation matrix. Um, but uh, obviously if circumstances change on any of these strategies and you're unable to. Find or raise the funds and you can't do the strategy, but you know, the implementation. Well, it is, I mean, feasibility is important, but.
Yeah, it sounds like you're asking the city to provide funding and so maybe you're asking the city to seek funding. Right? Or, I mean, I'm not sure really what the right thing is, but.
I see. So is it more that you're? Going to deep funding and.
I don't know. I don't know how these things work. I think it's great to support social services and housing agencies and I think we need new day shelters and digital housing. I don't know how it works.
Yeah, it, yeah, it can come from multiple sources and it kind of depends on.
It's not coming from the Gloucester budget, I don't think.
I, yeah, I think for sure it's the role of the city to help find grant funding, either on the state or federal level. Uh, to help this sort of thing. It is a question of whether local grant funding, like for instance, Affordable Housing Trust or CPC funds. Or CDBG funds that the, the city receives from the federal government could be used here. That's a, that's a question. Um, the most powerful thing to do would actually be to, to consider committing local funds so that that, that could be a. Discussion item, but in the very least, I think it's the city's role to help. Find funding and maybe other resources because it may not just be funding. It may be publicly owned land or facilitating. Some kind of a, a agreement in that way.
I think to David's point earlier, it's phrased, evaluate funding sources and other. Resources to support social services that, that puts it more again in a uh. A evaluation mode or bucket as opposed to uh, to Jane's point. The city has to do this, find the money for it.
Right, it's not a mandate.
Right. And to a certain degree, I think there's, there's. You know, housing authority and there are a bunch of other. Resources within the city that have this focus already, right? I mean, it's not a new idea, right?
Okay, so with that wordsmithing adjustment. Is that feeling a little better? Okay. Alright, next up is form a city hall working group to explore the creation of a community land trust and limited equity co-op models. To preserve naturally occurring affordable housing and create affordable homeownership opportunities.
So again, sorry, same comment. It's an action item and. Who doesn't want to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing and create affordable homeownership opportunities, but. I don't know if a community land trust and limited equity co-op model, which I don't even know what that is, is the right way to go about it.
So this one already does.
Recommend it, you know?
Well, this one is already worded as in you're exploring that, so you don't have to, you know, make that decision. Right this moment, but um, the, you know, I don't know if Jen wants to uh, chime in here too and, and. Community land trusts, but essentially it's a way for the city to. Um, or a nonprofit even, a separate nonprofit to own the land and lease it out to be able to. You know, have people sort of own the house, but not the land and it makes it more affordable than to. Um, own or, or rent the property.
So maybe that's a weird terminology because my only familiarity with community land trust is the trust for open space.
Well, we actually had, there was a community land trust in Gloucester. Um, and it, it merged with Harbor Light Housing and it created sixty-five units. Or so throughout the city. Um, so we've had that and again, to, to the point that. You know, Jane was raising where these are, these are specific action steps. You know, as opposed to um, exploring things. You know, I think here, rather than say form a city hall working group, you know, you, it could say explore. The creation of a community land trust and, and I would also add something here um, about. Harbor Light Housing because this is what they do and why, why reinvent the wheel?
Correct.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think um. It's important to mention community land trust as a strategy for preserving actually a, a, occurring affordable housing because. It's really the, the cost of the land that, that contributes to the incredibly expensive housing. Here in Gloucester and across uh, Massachusetts. And the, the way to combat that is to have more publicly owned land that we're saying we want to dedicate to affordable housing. I think um. Uh, it's important to talk about building upon efforts of community partners and it's great what Harbor Light does, but I'd just be cautious about. Specifically mentioning Harbor Light and not say another organization that does the work too.
You could say, for example.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and we don't actually have to necessarily put it right here in the strategy language. I put it in a comment because in the implementation matrix, we list. Different resources and different kind of even organizations, local organizations right there in the matrix. And so I noted it as an organization, but we might, you know, reference it. I would suggest we reference it in the implementation matrix rather than. In the strategy itself unless they're the kind of go-to thing for the strategy. Um, uh, and I just wanted to also mention limited, the co-op models because it sounded like there's a question as to what, what that is. Um, so that's rather than having a, you know, a, a condo building or, or something like that, that. It, it is um. At a market rate, a, a limited equity co-op model is where all of the people who own. That in sort of a home ownership, uh, homeowners association agree to. Have that, that um. Their equity grow at a more limited amount every year so that it, the rates stay. Lower, below market rate by agreement, but nothing is. Deed restricted in a traditional affordable housing sort of way, so it often is more affordable to buy into it. And you all own it together, so you all have to, you know, pay for any repairs and things together, but it does tend to be more naturally. Affordable, but not, you know, the kind of traditional model.
Yeah, so if you, if you have a deed restricted affordable unit. That you would be uh, accumulating equity on because you own the unit. This is saying that a portion of that equity goes into keeping the housing in that area affordable for the next person. So.
Yeah. That makes sense.
So can I ask a question about that? Because I see in the document a number of times it talked about naturally affordable housing.
What, what is that?
What is that?
I could, I could take that one.
Yeah, go ahead.
I may, I may be responsible for that term showing up in the document, so um, it's. Basically, it's, it's housing i- in the marketplace, so it's not deed restricted like a capital A affordable housing unit. But it tends to be more affordable either because it's smaller or because it's older. Um, you could think about it like this, a big single-family home in the marketplace is going to be unattainable um, for most people because it's going to be. Priced around a million dollars. You need a big down payment to get it, but if you have um, an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, that may be available to rent or if you, you know, uh, you have a smaller condo in a three-family building. It's going to be more attainable because it's small, you're not going to need to buy it, or if you do need to buy it. It'll be uh, relatively less expensive than say a big single-family home. So some people like to think of it as big A and little A, so big A would be like a deed restricted affordable home. And little A would be like that naturally occurring affordable housing that's affordable in the marketplace.
Is there a definition section then to the master plan?
Uh, we often do include a glossary, yes.
Okay, so I want to go back to a point that, that um, was made before because. That question about strategy versus implementation, I had understood from. From Jen that there isn't going to be implementation, but I think Laura, you've just mentioned. Twice that there actually is going to be an appendix that is going to be about implement, an implementation matrix?
Yes, we create an implementation matrix. So there's the, the plan, which will be the, the pretty. Um, publicly accessible document with laid out beautifully with all the photographs and it outlines. A little bit of the process and the vision and the goals and strategies and has glossary and so forth. Um, and then there's an implementation matrix which is done in Excel. You know, it's not as beautiful, but it's extremely practical because it's, it has all the columns of your, you know. What, what goals, that strategy on there, but you know, timeframe, it's, it's a short, medium, long-term strategy. Who's the, what's the key responsible department? Who's the key responsible border committee? Who are some of these other? Groups that are in, involved with the implementation of it? What are various funding sources and, and where might you find there? Are there other case studies or resources that, you know, um, that we can link? For you, I mean, just kind of build it all out. Um, and then it allows you to also. Just play with it and own it and have it be yours and add more columns to it around notes or where things are at or barriers or anything you want. Um, and it becomes more of a living working document as opposed to the. Um, and it becomes more of a living working document as opposed to the, uh, the, the plan, which is a little more static. It, it's a PDF, you know? Um, it doesn't have all those nice notes. Um, so it's meant to be more of a working resource, but we do encourage you to, to have a version that is. Um, viewable on a public website so that if people are interested in tracking of the status of any particular strategy that they're able to at least have a, an idea of kind of. You know, where, where it's at, um, in, in progress or, or anything like that. So.
Yeah, well, well said Laura. And just to, just to, um, clarify David, I think it's David who asked the question. What I was trying to say before is we, like what you see here is the level we'll take it to. So if you want us to step back and make these a little broader, less action-like, that's fine. But what you're doing here is creating the last level that we create. And we take these, what we call strategies, you can call some of them action items. We can change the way we're wording them, but what you see in this list, we take those. Put them into that implementation matrix, that spreadsheet exactly like you agree on in this document. There aren't action items beyond this. There's not another level that we provide beyond this. So the people who will be implementing each of these strategies, whether it's a board or committee, commission, department managers. Who, whoever it is will then figure out, well, what are the actions we need to do? To implement this. So that was my, we're not providing that level of detail, but we are making an implementation matrix out of this that shows potential funding sources, responsible parties, case studies, all those things that Laura just said. So I hope that.
Yeah. So we want to set you up for success so that when you are ready to get more specific on a given strategy. You have some places to start to create that punch list for how to actually get it done.
Thanks for clarifying.
That makes a lot of sense, but I do think it's worth reviewing, um, these two, like. One D six, for example, like if you just flip those two sentences and say something like. Um. You know. Gloucester, um, strategize to make homeownership more accessible and maintain the housing stock. You know. By, for example, expanding federally funded first time home buyer re- right? So like. Um. Or I don't know, explore strategy, explore strategies to make homeownership more accessible or whatever word we were using, evaluate strategies to make.
Yeah, I, I like that idea, Jane. When we notice that there's specific. Teetering on action items within the strategies we made, just. Generalize it and then say, for example, and refer to what is kind of in the area of, uh, action.
Yeah.
And I, you know, and again, we're, we're purely, you know, near the top of this exercise and it seems as though. At least from the planning board's perspective that, you know, strategies and, you know, action. This document may, may need to be reviewed just with the, those two. You know, criteria to soften the language and, you know, to evaluate versus, you know, start a new committee, right? I guess is. You know, sort of a broad sort of wordsmithing exercise versus going through every item.
Yeah. So if that's the case, I think. That can be reviewed. Um, and then if we notice that sort of thing tonight, maybe we can just chalk it to that's going to be, um, addressed. And then return to, to focusing our energy just on the yellow strategies, are they in or out?
Okay.
Okay. So as a concept. Of one D five. Are we feeling like that is in or out? With the wordsmithing.
Um, yeah, well, other people should weigh in. I think it's great.
I would say.
Yeah, I, I think the thing is again, it's one of those items that, of course you're for it, right? But the, you know. Two years from now, somebody opens up this document and says, huh, it's right here in the plan. You guys got to do something. Right? And here are the implementation strategies and, you know, how do you go about that? Right? And so. Yes, it's, it's the right thing to do. I don't know how you, you know, move it up from out of the starting blocks. Isn't the only concern.
Yeah. So we, you know, like I said, we'll give you, we're going to give you some. Um, resources and things in the implementation matrix that kind of get you to that next step. But often, as you said, these strategies, they live at a little bit of a higher, broader level. So there is often more planning work to be done, um, to figure out. How to, how to do it. And, and when you get into the weeds, i- if it's just turns out to be not viable, then it's not viable, but. Um, these are policy discussions and decisions that it seems like the city is interested in pursuing. And it's not, you know, chisels and stone, right? It's, 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 you're not, this isn't, uh. Right, right. It's not something you're committed to doing. It's just something you are committed to exploring.
And I, and I guess, you know, I'm feeling Jane's pain a little bit where. If that's the case, we have a strategy and implementation, we're only really seeing half of. The document, right? And so we're not looking at, uh, one D five. Here's the strategy and here's the, you know, the corresponding implementation, right? So we're, I think I'm struggling with it. Jane's struggling with it. Um, and it's tough to make a decision when you only see half the picture.
Well, actually, Rick, what they're saying is this is the implementation as well. They'll give us resources to implement it, which we don't see here, but.
Yeah, but that's my point. We don't see that part.
Yeah, okay.
For us to make sense of it, right?
Yeah.
So we did, for, for the ones that are here in this original list, at least there were, you know, as part of the technical working session packets of things. So we're. You know, links and things that we included and, and, um, that session we had back in October also to kind of. Try to, um, ask questions. Um, so you might be able to even look back, um, at some of that, um, documents as well, but, um, so one, uh, D seven. This is about local preference. So give local preference to already displaced households when creating development agreements and applying for local preference from the state as affordable housing is ready to be marketed.
I don't really know what that means.
So anytime affordable housing comes online, uh, the city can apply to the state to reserve seventy percent of it for Gloucester residents.
Oh, so then it should be capital A affordable.
Yeah, that's referring to capital A affordable and, um. In terms of, um. Giving preference to displaced individuals. That can be done through a development agreement. That would be the mechanism to be able to do that. So, you know, say somebody was living in affordable unit, their deed restricted expired, their rent went market rate. And they were displaced. We'd have a record of that because they used to live in. A unit that had a deed restriction. So you could try and. Give them preference for new units coming on, just recognizing that, you know, we don't want to lose long-term Gloucester residents.
But yeah, you're only allowed to do that once, but, uh, and it's not just for residents. It's also for people who work here or have kids in the school system.
But my, my read on this and my problem with it was that. Um, it seems like there are. Two levels of preference. You're establishing a local preference. And then. You're wanting to create a separate list of those local applicants. To say. Are, are you displaced? Have you been displaced when? This other family might not have been displaced, but is, has the same need for. That unit of affordable housing. It, it just seems like it complicates the. The, um, decision tree and how you allot that. That unit of housing. You have two levels of.
I mean, sometimes there are development agreements and sometimes there aren't. Um, so. Uh, any, anyone who's displaced might. Be able to apply for any number of different options for a new affordable unit. Um, and the city is going to be somewhat. Limited in their opportunities to give. A new housing unit to an individual who's displaced or to those who have that need because it's really when the opportunity arises, right of. Uh, there is a new development happening with affordable units, um, that you can. Make the case to the state that, yeah, we, and, you know, have a local need here for, for local preference. Um.
Yeah, typically a, a development agreement would come into play if the city was using. Land or its own resources in exchange for something specific. So that might be a time where if it's the priority to, um, try and. Bring back anyone who has been displaced, um, that you may prioritize them, but it could say potentially. Um. And consider dedicating a portion of, of, of new units, um, to displaced individuals. Uh, but I agree, Sean. I mean, it's, it's a tough call to make.
And I guess, and, and if you have a, a, a. Better information, Alex, I think that, you know, every. You know, capital A deed restricted development that this planning board has done in the last, you know, ten or fifteen years. It's always come up that we should have local preference and the answer came, was always come back. That unless the, the city spends city money to build out like a Cameron's for thirty units. And if you're, you're in that HUD section eight mechanism, that local preference is not permissible, right?
Yeah, you know, there are two, there are two separate things and that's something I think that should be clarified. So. Let's say you just get inclusionary units that come in through the zoning ordinance, or you have a four DB and there's affordable units that are built through it. Um, you can just, uh, uh, when the units come online, you make an application, the city makes an application to the state. And says, um, we would like to have, uh, a certain percent of these units reserved for. Gloucester residents, um, and others that are eligible for local preference. And, and within that, the state actually has some parameters and guidelines for. Reserve this many for seniors, reserve this many for veterans, et cetera. Um. That's one thing. And then. If a development agreement is coming into play, it's because the city's giving funds to something or the city's, um, allowing a developer to use, uh, land that it owns. And in exchange for that, it's asking for things in return like affordable housing units. And there'd be a development agreement and that would actually be the only time that you could do something so specific as saying. We want to have a certain unit, uh, amount of units reserved for people that have been displaced.
Okay. So I guess the follow-up question is then who manages those units? Does it go through the housing authority? And, and what's?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it, it depends on, you know, who the development partner is, you know, you could, you know, say put out a RFP for publicly owned property. And then whoever, um. Wins the bid and meets the criteria and expectations and enters the development agreement with the city. They would be the, the ones managing. Could be the housing authority if it was a partnership with the housing. But it could also be a nonprofit partner.
And I guess again, this is getting back to that action thing. And to me, it sounds incredibly granular, um, and almost creates false hope. Um. And, and it seems incredibly complicated. So I don't. You know. I don't know that this, this would ever see the light of day in reality is my point.
Well, I, I mean, I've seen it happen all the time, like in terms of. Applying for local preference to the state when affordable units happen. That, that happens all the time.
Let me just, let me just jump in because there's, as Alex pointed out, there are two different things. Our ordinance. States that we request. Local preference with every unit that's created under an inclusionary. So. We already do it. Every time once created, we, we have to send in a letter to the state and provide the justification that we can for that local preference. So that's, that's nothing new. I think it's just this other piece of. You know, it sounds like it's a little bit specific, limited potential application where. You know, the city might be the, you know, the driver of, uh, using city-owned land, that type of thing. Um. It's. I guess you, you could think about those things, but. To, to leap to, we want to do that. Development agreements are complicated. There are often a lot of different things that. You're hoping to achieve with it. So I'm not, I, I kind of agree. That it's a, it's a little, it's a little spit, specific and maybe limited in its application.
Yeah, I think it might be better for this recommendation to focus on establish priorities for things the city would. Want in return for public resources when drafting a development agreement. And prioritize. Potentially. Um, bringing, uh, giving, uh, opportunities to displace individuals. There could be other things too, like prioritize. Um, affordable family-sized units. So it's like, if you're going to have a development agreement, establish. The priorities. Of things that you'll be asking for in those development agreements.
So why don't we say evaluate establishing priorities? For local preference. For giving local preference, whatever. Um.
I, I think we probably, to Greg's point. The local preference thing is a little confusing because.
Okay.
That's something we apply for when development comes online. Greg is pointing out that we already do it, so we don't need to mention it here. I think it's more about, um, what do we prioritize that the city requests in return when we're, when we're entering development agreements?
That makes more sense to me.
Are you still talking about? Deed restriction, affordable housing now? Or any development agreement?
We're under the housing bucket here. So yeah, we're, we're talking about housing, uh, deed restricted housing.
Yeah. So we need to say deed restricted.
And so just to clarify, deed restriction refers solely to section eight or other housing mechanisms?
Me. Um, just any affordable housing that's required to be affordable per deed restriction that could come.
Right. So you need to have deed restricted in front of that A affordable, or you capitalize the A just to be consistent.
I think it's, it's more about. Prioritize deed restricted affordable housing when creating development agreements.
Yeah, and I would, I would scrap the deed restricted piece. You can have a rental development that has a, you know, long-term affordability without being deed restricted. The affordability agreement is what, uh, you know, from the funders is what makes it affordable, not a deed. Technically not a deed restriction all the time. So I think if you just do capital A, trouble housing, that'll cover it. Yep.
Sorry, Jen, you said, do you use capital A affordable housing?
Yeah, I would just do, use a capital A affordable. So we know we're talking about affordable, official affordable, but it doesn't necessarily. Only relate to deed restricted. It could be a rental development that's, has a regulatory agreement and is not technically deed restricted.
It'd still be more comfortable if it said evaluating. Or evaluate prioritizing. So it's not a mandate. It's a consideration.
Yeah, technically none of these are mandates, but I, I understand where, what you're, what you're going, where are you going with that? All right. So evaluate prioritizing affordable housing in development agreements such as. Local preference to already displaced households. Did I get that about right or am I missing something?
Why don't you just say preference to avoid confusion with the other local preference?
What you're saying? Oh, okay.
Or such as. Giving. Opportunities to already displaced persons. Just avoid preference because it's, it's a. It causes confusion with local preference. Which is a separate thing.
Okay. And with that, I'm assuming this is in the short.
Right.
Yeah.
All righty. So there are two more. Um, new ideas here under the same goal. Um, one is. To identify investment opportunities and incentive strategies to support, support working artists. With affordable studio spaces, including a review of relevant zoning codes and tax incentives. Um, so this is, I think the thrust of this strategy is really. Specific to trying to have more affordable housing. Um. For artists and live workspaces. And the next one is maintain a public database or vacant properties and their development potential.
Yeah. So I'll just comment here because I facilitated this discussion with the Committee for the Arts. And this was, uh, very important issue for the committee has talked about, um, frequently. About, uh, many working artists in Gloucester, uh, that are having. About uh many working artists in Gloucester uh that are having. Their rents for their studio spaces going up to the point where they need to leave. Um, so it's, it's a real threat to. The culture and vibrancy of the city, which has a strong uh history of artists, you know. Harking back to Rocky Neck um and everything that the city does to promote art uh today. So, I just want to emphasize this is a very important um strategy for them. And. Some of the things that they mentioned that were on the action detail level were, you know, where are are there opportunities? When, say, um, public buildings are no longer used. Uh, rather than to tear them down, could we consider uh using them for artist workspaces because? In that situation, there's, there's not a a big need to have. Um, a brand new development, just something that's kind of up to code. Is what artists are looking for, and actually, you know, if you're looking at like schools. Classroom spaces, they 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 see as excellent examples of that, there's a lot of really cool examples of. That uh that's been done in other cities with cultural districts across Massachusetts, like Gloucester has. And um, so I think it also kind of relates to the development agreement conversation they were having. As you know, if you're having a development agreement that pertains to a publicly owned property. Should you be prioritizing affordable housing, should you be prioritizing? Affordable uh artist studio space, should you be prioritizing other things like um civic space or or whatever it may be? But um. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background on where that came from, it was like one of the biggest things that came out of the conversation with the committee for the arts.
So maybe what the what the ID seven should say is um. Evaluate established or establish priorities. Such as affordable housing, artists, affordable studios, and all those other things you just mentioned in development agreements. Because isn't that the larger? Or?
Yeah, I think so, um, there was also some ideas of, you know, could there be some kind of tax incentive to incentivize landlords? To keep rents lower for art, working artists in their studio spaces. Um. The one D nine, I think is is important. It it relates to those different things because then, you know, you're you're. Looking at what opportunities could come up. And putting it on the radar, putting it out there that these could potentially. Be opportunities for affordable housing, affordable studio space, or other public benefits. I think all of those things, you know, when they get down to the implementation level, require their own community process to make sure that. Um, the community is driving whatever decision is. But I think the role of the recommendation in this comprehensive plan is to. Put that idea out there because maybe that's not being thought of, you know, if if. Things come online right now, it might not even be a thought, so by having it in the plan, you know, that's something that the city could look at.
Sure. Is it public database of vacant properties, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
And Greg, do we not have that already? As a layer? In GIS?
Um, we don't have that level of speci- specificity as a layer. Um, there there are identified properties through the building department. When they become vacant, um, so there is that that listing. And that's something that, you know, again, where where we're gonna put it or how we how we make that available. Um, it's it's something that can be done, it's a, it's a public record when those are identified.
And the reason why I'm kind of scrolling back here is because I'm I'm reading these two strategies and I'm thinking to myself. These are sort of both economic development and housing. Related, at least the one D nine for sure, so I'm just kind of going, hmm, does it live in the housing stability goal? Um, or does it live in? Um. Something more economic development related. Um.
And I guess the thing that I'm getting hung up on a little bit is that, you know, we're trying to prioritize affordable housing for displaced households. And and then in the next breath, we're talking about artist studios, and I think if we further define the, you know, a live work. Space for artisans, um, it it doesn't necessarily say, oh. I should have a place to paint, but a family of four doesn't have a place to live. Right, I mean, I guess, and not to be crass, but that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, I wouldn't want those things to be pitted against each other, so we should. Correctly.
Right, and that's where I'm going, oh, I wonder if these two actually. Aren't a one, aren't one D, I'm thinking they might actually be. More, well, one D, one D nine could be either. Residential or commercial or mixed use, it could be kind of anything. Um. But they could go, like, if we're talking about studio spaces particularly, maybe that belongs down where we're also talking about. Other kind of arts related economic development items down here in one F. Uh, for example.
But the live work thing has always come up. And that that in, to me, is different from an artist saying my studio rent has gone up. Right, because that artist is already living someplace, they then they're working someplace else. And so, again, super granular, but I think, you know, not to pit one against the other is important.
Yeah, I I would agree with you, Rick, I think our lack of affordable housing problem is more important than. Promoting, I mean, I know the goal is. Promoting a place where people can live and work and artists can be happy, but. Um, affordable housing is much more of an important issue than incentivizing artists to live here. Sadly, but true.
Well, I will say, and I'm saying this because I spoke to artists on the Committee for the Arts, there are a lot of artists. Working artists that have trouble affording to live here, uh, it's not. You know, one of the highest paying occupations and potential. No, depending on what kind of artist you are, you know.
I know, but I mean, so do service workers and everybody else, like, I mean, they're in the same boat as everyone. Um.
Right, why why call them out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I think it's affordable housing and that pertains to everybody, it's like artists, families, service workers, um, teachers, all these important groups to the community. But I think the recommendation on one uh on the development agreement side is. Um, you can ask for things, community benefits uh in a development agreement. And then, so that could be affordable housing, could be studio space, could be other things.
Yeah, so Alex, I think you know where we're coming from, maybe you could. Rework this because, and then stuff about art, there was stuff about artists in a different section, I think it was economic development, right, so. You know. And there, we can talk about in that section, um, supporting artists. And and having strategies for supporting artists. Um. But housing, but housing just for artists in the housing section doesn't seem right to me, I guess.
Yeah, I don't think it's just a housing for artists, and that's actually consistent with what the Committee for the Arts was talking about, they don't want to just say like. Affordable housing for artists.
And and tax incentives is a very kind of a different thing, that's more economic also.
Yes, that's kind of what I was thinking too, is I'm going, oh, wow, I wonder if. Um, these two actually belong, I'm just gonna go ahead.
I mean, tax incentives aren't gonna get you a more affordable housing, ever.
Down, like, are these actually about business retention, development and growth? Because we already have other things on arts here.
Probably.
Yeah, I mean, I think working artists are are fallen in the category of businesses, um. And I think they also pertain to economic development and and promoting tourism.
But I I think to Alex's point earlier, including it not necessarily for. Uh, live workspace, but um. This simply affordable studio space trying to identify. Help identify. Buildings that could be utilized for that, um, a good example of that is uh. The second story above Jalapenos, that wasn't developed into housing, but it was developed into, I think there are seven uh. Smaller studio spaces up there for artists, uh, that they specifically developed it for that purpose, for artist studios.
Right, but I thought that that space was live work, not just studio specific.
No, I don't think, I don't think anyone lives up there. I don't, they they didn't permit it that way, I think it's supposed to be um, studio space. But again, identifying potentials, this is definitely off the table at this point, but um. Talking about surplus schools, East Gloucester Elementary School could have probably been. Pretty cheaply redeveloped into a pretty large complex for working artist studios, whereas. Redeveloping it into any type of. Housing affordable or not, uh, would not, would would not have been within the realm of possibility at that point. Um, for the city, so I I I do see a point to calling out. The need to sort of focus on, and it is, I think, um, more an economic. Item as opposed to a housing item, but um identifying, just like we would for the fishing industry and anybody else. Trying to uh identify. Sources of uh opportunity for artists in the community as well.
I agree, well said.
Yeah.
Okay, so assuming that we're shifting it into goal one F. As a policy discussion of these two items, it sounds like. One F eleven, now the new one F eleven is a is a go. Um, understanding that it is actually a little bit flexible, it's not just necessarily business, but maybe we put it there. Um, and then we have this as the. And I added a sort of for example here, but it's about identifying. Some strategies to support working artists with the portable studio spaces.
Great.
Alright, so I'm gonna just highlight those now as green, so I can track what I'm doing. Alright, um, going back up, so we have one additional strategy idea to discuss for goal one E. Which is promote mixed use and live work opportunities and select locations to activate neighborhood centers and strengthen downtown. Um, the new strategy idea is to offer short term tax relief to landlords. Who allow use of vacant buildings for pop up shops, artist studios or community events.
You feel like, again, that's an economic thing, isn't it?
Yeah, I agree.
Anytime you talk about taxes, it seems like an economic idea.
So this wouldn't, so live under the mixed use and live work, it would be under support business retention, development and growth.
I think so. Um, and also, again, just. You know, evaluate offering short term tax release, tax relief. I don't know what the implications of that are, I mean, you know, again, Gloucester budget is so tight and tax relief means less taxes. So, there's pros and cons to. That, if it means we can't pay the teachers and we have to do a prop two and a half override and blah blah.
Yeah, they would have to crunch the numbers on it for sure.
Yeah, and I'm so, I haven't seen this one yet, I'm not sure which group this came from. But I'm also curious about um what incentives that. Um, is giving to property owners who now have maybe more of an incentive to leave a property vacant if they can get some tax breaks by doing that.
I I I mean, property taxes on a three family house are five thousand dollars a year, right, so. That house could generate sixty thousand dollars worth of rental income, there's no incentive to leave it vacant.
I think this was trying to say incentivize them to fill the building. If it's already vacant.
Can you say that again, I can't really hear you.
I I think this one was intended, um, I think it came from the Committee for the Arts and it was intended. To to say use tax relief to incentivize. Filling buildings with pop up shops, studios or community events if they're vacant. But that committee, you know, doesn't have the same kind of expertise as you do, and so if you have. Um, now that we're moving it into the economic development area, if you want to um edit it appropriately.
Well, it's it's not housing.
Right. Yeah, my understanding is that this is related to commercial buildings that are. Existing buildings, not vacant lots, but that are vacant buildings. Um, this seems like if if we were referring to vacant lots, um, I think that's. That makes a lot of sense, but my only, you know, again, I'm just seeing this, my only pause is that, um.
You don't want to incentivize leaving the building vacant.
Exactly, right, yeah.
Well, I I see it more, and I, again, I don't know about the the tax relief part, but. When I read this, what I pictured are the pop up shops um. On the ground floor of uh Harbor Village that Action has been allowing the use of, so that's. That's where where I saw this, that if, uh, again, using Harbor Village as an example. They have those commercial spaces um intended for long term commercial rent, they hadn't. Uh, booked any long term commercial uh tenants in those, and so. Coordinating with the city, they've been doing a series of pop up shops for various artists to come in for. Two or three months and operate out of there, that that's what I saw this as, more of a um. Pursuing that type of thing with various um currently empty. Uh, so, commercial buildings on Main Street, et cetera.
And how about Gloucester Crossing, yikes. Um. So maybe we need vacant commercial spaces, not like vacant buildings, we need, right, we need, we need.
I'm wondering too if we want to use the word underutilized here, if or if we want to keep it just for vacant.
I like underutilized.
I I listen to.
Okay, so now it says evaluate offering incentives such as short term tax relief for landlords. To encourage activation of underutilized commercial spaces for pop up shops, artist studios or commu- community events.
Great, love it.
Alright, um, so there's four more ideas, new ideas for the, under this economic development goal. Um, one is to look for opportunities to use public facilities, especially expir- aspiring school facilities as opportunities. To provide new community art spaces or studios, so that was um several, two of these I believe are from Friends of the Arts. Um, and then two of them I believe are from the EDIC. The first to relate more to arts and the second more to that other committee. But, um. Okay, so there's the public facilities one, and then there's using public private partnerships such as uh. Friends of the Arts philanthropic model to support the acquisition of private buildings that come up for sale for the purpose of additional affordable art studio or live workspaces. Um, and then it kind of shifts to a different theme, which is hiring a fuller part time. EDIC director to help sustain that um, that function and support a steady revenue stream. And establishing regular communication channels, points of contact and direct relationships with employers in Gloucester to help understand issues and retain businesses.
So, but I have nine, I think that's a no brainer, yes, of course, we should be doing that, and it's not. Um, we're not asking, you know, it doesn't need to be funded, that particular. Action item. Um. But explore opportunities to hire a fuller part time EDIC director, like, that's really in a vacuum for me, I have no idea whether that's needed, how much it costs. Um, whether it would pay for itself or not, like, I have no way of evaluating that.
Yeah, I think that's why they kept the language as explore, um. You know, to evaluate exactly those things, Jane, that you just mentioned, um. As well as, you know, whether or not there is funding for it to be full time versus part time. And those are the the kinds of things that it would just open up the door to look into.
Well, I think F eight and F nine um really require a dedicated person uh to focus on that.
Oh, they do, even F nine?
Yeah, I I would say so, and. Maybe it is someone um who is both doing that and supporting the EDIC in that effort.
I know that um, one of the strategies that the EDIC and others have been in um. Strong support of is to hire somebody for the economic development position or to refill that role. So something that we talked about is kind of the order in which these things happen, um, so. Filling that role would be step one, and then that person, whoever is. And in that role would then be responsible for establishing those regular communication channels, so. That was something that I think the EDIC was. Toying with a little bit is how these um play out in terms of ordering, which is something um that I think Laura mentioned, we will. Refer back to in the mutation matrix in terms of whether it's a short term goal or more medium term, longer term. Um but but I can say that from the EDIC's perspective, I think they felt strongly that they wanted both. The economic development role filled as well as a a director.
Well, they just put it all in one, one strategy saying, you know, explore the need for. An EDIC staff person who would fulfill these various responsibilities and roles.
So you're suggesting combining F eight and F nine?
Well, aren't you saying, is that two people or one person? Is I thought Alex just said that person would also be doing.
It's it seems like it's a little more detailed than other recommendations, and it it really just falls under the area of capacity building. You know, there needs to be. The capacity to um for all the economic development initiatives in this plan. Um but these two things in particular.
But wouldn't a part time, full time or part time EDIC director be doing what's outlined in one F nine?
I think they would, but. In another sense, the EDIC is really focused on um the Blackburn Industrial Park, and you know, a lot of the biggest employers are there. But it's a question of does the EDIC work on broader economic development issues as well?
Hey, well, you're out of my. League and area of expertise here, so.
I think it really should talk about building capacity and then refer to. You know, the the potential for for positions to support the EDIC and. To have those regular communication channels with employers and businesses.
So Laura, will you just um navigate to somewhere in here, we talk about building capacity for the economic development? I just want to be able to refer back to that wording as we're looking at this.
So somewhere else, there's build capacity?
Yeah, something about high, you know, um basically filling Sal's role of Economic Development Director. I don't remember the.
I mean, we have in goal two, we aren't there yet. We do talk in general about evaluating. The organizational structure of departmental functions and capacity and things like that. Um as well as expanding staff capacity through other kinds of regional collaborations. So we have kind of a catchall here for all kind of across the board.
Yeah, I think we had one that was economic development director, maybe can you just try to search maybe for economic development director? I apologize, I don't.
Building coordination to have a support. Um energy capacity, no. Good, no. Oh, there it is. Explore opportunities to build economic development capacity in Gloucester through a full or part time position or committee. Focused on high level strategic initiatives. In addition to small business support.
Yeah, I think it needs to talk about staff. And and needs to be general to open up the opportunity for, say, multiple staff. Maybe that would be more advantageous than one director, um so. Capacity, but not just capacity through a committee, um it needs staff best.
So take off or committee. Position or and then like maybe parentheses S through. One or more full or part time. Positions.
Yeah, and then and then maybe the other recommendations could say, you know, utilize staff capacity. To support the EDIC as well as um. Yeah, the F nine. And I'd say economic development staff capacity, whether you have an F one.
So then in the, you know, in the economic or I'm sorry, I have to type first then talk. Um in the implementation nature, for example, we could have a an or a a suggested order. Right where you first you have to build your capacity, you know, short term, et cetera, and then medium term or long term. You're doing these other things once you have built up that capacity. Okay, so are we? Are we feeling better about these two? Are these two now in?
So I apologize, I didn't realize my mic was um muted, but my understanding that EDIC was formed. Almost as an enterprise fund to operate the Blackburn Industrial Park. And so I don't know if we're using EDIC as sort of a generic term, or we're actually talking about. Um expanding the scope of EDIC's responsibilities to be more citywide versus Blackburn specific. And that would be a question for Alex.
I mean, my conversations with the EDIC tell me that they are interested in expanding that scope. But um and I don't know if they talked about that when you were going through the comp plan.
Yeah, I think they um were really interested in both an economic development um director who is. Focused citywide, um including things like small business support, um but then also to have their own capacity. For their initiatives um that they feel like they don't currently have um enough resources for.
I mean, I can um. Talk to Tom Balf about this, but I'd venture to say they're interested in exploring. The expansion of their scope beyond Blackburn Industrial Park. Um so I'll talk to him about that because it may be worth um identifying in this plan.
And I guess the, you know, of course, I mean, to to the extent that Blackburn is reasonably full. And EDIC doesn't see much opportunity, except for that one parcel that's been redeveloped and. Um so I don't know that they have a lot to do, right? Um and so that might be a driver, right? And so I think this is, this is. Almost premature, you know, this EDIC discussion, but I'm, you know, happy to open the door, um but it seems. Like a big step, not a little step.
And not everything has to go in the plan either, right? You're you're free to do pursue things as they arise as well. If it doesn't necessarily make it in here, you can still do it.
Well, that's kind of my point.
Yeah, um so I'm gonna assume that these two, it sounds like these two are are in. Um what about the ones related to the arts?
I mean, again, it's I don't have any real opposition to the idea, um and I mean, there seems to be a lot of work. Um in this direction, um and everybody wants to support it. Again, it seems like we're building a lot of language around something that may or may not happen um. But again, I in it's like creating more housing, yes, you're always for it. You just hope that this, you know, there's strategies and implementations that actually can, you know, fulfill the the amount of. You know, resources that we're putting, you know, for these strategies and implementations. So it's, you know.
Yeah, and I I think they're they really relate. They're almost just the same thing said a little differently than the other recommendations we're looking at, so I think. It's just a matter of looking at the other recommendations that were talking about development agreements and. Publicly owned properties and things and looking at this and and finding the right way to describe it. But I do think it's important to call it out in the complaint so that it's on the radar when when opportunities come up in the future.
I mean, I would agree with that approach, right, you know?
Okay, so I'll say these are in, but I'll also maybe make a note. To look at the um. The ordering of similar strategies and opportunities for consolidation.
Yeah, that's fair.
Related to perks. Alrighty. So these all came out as, there's a few in here that were in the middle that looks like they were now in. Um without too much fuss, um so with that, I'm gonna jump to core theme four. So a little bit of a change of topic here, because I I do want to give um. There's anything related to transportation that needs to get discussed, I want um Juliette to have a chance their way in. Um though it looked by and large like a lot of the transportation related strategies were were pretty good to go. Um there is, so under this goal four. Create and support a comprehensive transportation network to provide safe and viable connections to key destinations. There is an additional strategy idea that um was to be discussed around streamlining permitting. For alternative transportation infrastructure.
And how would that be defined?
So I think you, you know, it would be probably something in a, it could be a policy document or potentially in. Zoning, I suppose, or some sort of, you know, preference or something. To have it be. More by right, but um maybe my my zoning or transportation experts here can also have an um. Talk about cases where they've seen this done.
Uh but um with my question is, what's alternative transportation?
Exactly.
Oh, oh, um so that I interpreted that as to be anything other than a car, pretty much. Um so could, you know, cyclist infrastructure, um sidewalk, um. But something that's gonna be an infrastructure, so probably or a change in the roadway for prioritized bus lane or, you know, I don't know. That's my interpretation of that.
So is is permitting the the barrier to that, or is it really more other things that could help bring alternate? Transportation.
Yeah, who who even does the permitting for that? It's not us.
I don't really understand this. As someone who does transportation planning and design, I I don't.
Yeah, I was just thinking to myself, I'm like, I don't know if I have ever come across. That.
Okay, let's let's bag it.
Yeah, okay, alright, great.
That one goes on you, Jane.
Alright, bye bye. Um alright, so then next up is under encouraging the use of alternative modes of transportation. Um so still in the middle here is to allocate funding to subsidize public transit costs for Gloucester residents. Incentivize the use of Cape Ann Transportation Authority. By implementing transportation demand management measures that can include subsidized transit fares and transit subsidies can be partial. Uh reduced or wholesale.
So again, you're, when you talk about allocate funding, I don't know if Gloucester has the capacity to allocate funding. To anything um and.
I would just point out that that CADA has reduced their fares, and I think right now they it freely use CADA, so. I think it's kind of more about building upon the success that Kate is having.
And they had, they were offering free rides through the end of the year for, you know, I don't know what the ex- the extent of the free ride program they had, so. I'd rather ask the question first and then, you know, adopt a policy afterwards to see if that actually was, you know. Because they operate as as a their own entity, right? I mean, they're not essentially a state agency, right?
Their state? Sorry, Juliette, I can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah. What were you saying?
Is that better?
Yes, actually it is, yes.
Um okay, yeah, it's an RTA, so it's a regional transit agency, so they operate kind of independently, but they do. De- depend on some coordination with the with the state. Um but I think I think there's a couple of things in here that I I would encourage us to to think about um. Yeah, I agree about the comment about allocating funding, I think you need to be more clear about that and what the objectives are. If Kida already has a plan in place to offer reduced fares and and is is operating kind of under its own, you know. In collaboration probably with the city, but but also is in charge of its own operations, um but also the TDM for part of this um. I don't recall that Gloucester has a TDM program or anything like that. And and that does take some management at the at the city level, if you're if you're asking for. For example, on contributions or some kind of documentation that that developments or but businesses are contributing to. A TDM measure, so I just want to make sure that's that's clear.
I think there are some zoning changes that can be made for around TDN as well, right?
You can incentivize, you know, uh yeah, you can do some incentivizing of TDM measures in zoning, but it's just, it does require some. Some management of the, like, if you're if you're saying, you know, like tracking, like similar to housing, right? If you're gonna. Require allocation of a certain percentage of housing, you have to track that. Um similarly with TDM measures, if you're gonna ask for a a business or a development to. For example, subsidize transit fares, you need to track that and have some kind of way of managing that.
I don't have, I have enough expertise to to weigh in on this.
And I my concern is that, again, sort of my understanding that CADA is, you know, operates. It's not a, it's not a general fund entity, right? And so. Master plan that we're gonna talk to an outside agency and talk about. You know, we're basically creating a strategy for somebody else else's business, right? I mean, so again.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so I think it could be more about. You know, I think the city does this now, but it's still worth saying that you really coordinate with CADA um to take advantage of it.
Yep.
Like one thing that that comes into mind, and if we have festivals and. And things, you know, if we got a lot going on on the waterfront, and wanna do something special with Kida to bring those people up to the downtown. That sort of thing, um as well as the day to day kind of coordination, but the mayor sits on the CADA board, I think there is good coordination now. But um talking about that, I think still works well.
Yeah, but I my my perspective is that Kate is offering that, and and what this is saying to me is that. We're requiring it from CADA, right? So if you have excess capacity at CADA. And we have a jazz festival, yeah, yeah, you can use my bus, right? This is, you know, there's, you know, it's not a two way street, it's a one way street, right?
Yeah, would it make sense to maybe rephrases today to just say coordinate with CADA to. Remove potential barriers or in, you know, I don't want to say incentivize is always overused, but look at ways to increase um. Utilization of CADA as a as a transportation mode.
That's what I was thinking, it's set to say coordinate with uh with CADA to um increase use of public transportation. Within the city.
Or support Cada's efforts to.
And it seems like this, the city could could um could help out with maybe creating spaces that. People would know uh CADA shuttle stop at or advertising it on signs.
They have CADA on demand as well, right, already?
Hmm.
That's it, but that's part time, though, it's like, I think it's five days a week during business hours, but to to Rick's point. CADA is very receptive to um. Responding to community events, when we just did the the Lopso Trap tree lighting um last month. Um, last month, uh, we arranged with Gordons to allow for uh, overflow parking in their lot. And uh, asked Kida to provide shuttle service, both. Uh, during that evening afternoon, both from Gordons and from the uh, from stageboard, so they are really responsive to.
Absolutely.
Events.
Yeah, I mean, Kate is fantastic.
So I just wanna interject here, it's uh, ten minutes before six. Um, it, I know that we have got a lot of. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in Utah. Um, so I've got a hard stop in ten minutes. Um, and so I don't. If you guys wanna continue, that's terrific. Um, but I've I've gotta finish up in ten minutes.
I'm dying.
Yes.
I I tried to warn you guys, this might be a long meeting. I figured we were probably gonna have to continue it to February um. Six, but I. Let's just take a quick peek ahead, because I think there's just this one. These two, yeah, we've got a bit to go here, but these don't relate to transportation at all. I just wanna take a little peek. I think this is the last one related to transportation, so I just wanna make sure we get through this one. Well, we've got Juliette on the. On the line here, um, and then the rest, if we want, can go to, you know, February sixth, then we'll wrap up. Um, hopefully that day. Um, does that sound fair? So how are we doing on on this this strategy so far? We were, have we words method to a good?
So four B two, I think we're okay with moving forward.
I I would suggest eliminating the reference to TDM and just.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just ended to support, I think.
Support their efforts.
I don't know, or just ended it, increased use of public transportation. Was there really any need to add the rest of that?
I mean, there's a separate recommendation on how we could do transportation demand management. Um, you know, I don't wanna lose that, maybe it just needs to be separate and discussed differently.
And maybe it's more about zoning thing potentially?
Yeah, because TDM can be more than just about, it would, TDM could be more than just about Kida.
Okay. Okay, and then I'll stick that as a a good to go with some caveats of like, maybe this gets split off, right? Um, but we'll have to circle back on that. All right, um. Well, why don't we just kind of forge ahead until we have the eight o'clock stop? Does that sound okay to everyone?
Well, could I just bring up, because I think it's somewhat related to this one is is um. Discover Gloucester talked about, you know, there are tour buses that come in. There are also cruise ships that come in, there's people that come in off the train. And there's not a great designated space. For the buses uh, or or for, or maybe it's more that there's, I guess it's two things, is is there spaces for. Um, people who are coming in as tourists who who don't have cars, like whether it's a bus or another form. What is their transportation after that point? So any any bike and pet kind of recommendations, I think should also. Be speaking to supporting the circulation of tourists around the city as well. In addition to all the other great things that come from that. Um. And also, the the second thing is, is there sort of like a city ambassador? Who who kind of welcomes people who are visiting the city and make sure that they go and, you know, spend funds. In Gloucester to benefit businesses here, that sort of thing.
So I know we have some strategies related to bike and pet infrastructure and and targeting areas that are. Used by tourists, you know, especially around cultural districts, historic districts, uh, you know, downtown harbor area. Um, and for the other ambassador one, I think we had a strategy that was related to looking at. Um, uh, how to use, best use like the visitor's center and discover Gloucester. You know, as as how how do it, I can't remember exact wording of it, I'd probably have to find it here. Um. So we're partnering with local organizations like Discover Gloucester to promote the downtown area. We're connecting historic arts and cultural concerts, Discover Gloucester. Ah, here it is, there's um. This, we haven't gotten into it yet, we'll probably get into it more on on February sixth then, but building on Gloucester's strengths with the visitors welcome center and. And so far, to create a program to guide.
Yeah, so that that part of it's getting ahead, but the the part on the transportation pieces is maybe like looking at. Designated places uh, for. Um, tour buses and and people are coming to visit. Or. Or in addition to wayfinding systems that direct them. Or help them get from those places, whether that be a bus, the train, cruise ship.
Yeah, I think we do have a strategy related to wayfinding already. Okay, and I'll just throw that in there, just to take another look at it.
But I mean, Juliette, I'm just curious from from your perspective, is there any? Thing on the transportation side that we're missing here that we might wanna look at?
Well, I actually was just gonna propose, I I I don't see anything missing, but I I do see like under goal four D. That some of those items are actually not public transportation. I think there's just needs some reorganization. Those first two items probably would belong. In the alternative, I guess, or bike, bike, ped facility, and then I think you could put the Kida one in four D. Um. I think, I think overall. It seemed like you covered, you know, the multimodal components pretty well.
So if we, well, now I'm seeing that, yeah, we're gonna have to do a little bit of reorganization, because right now we have Ben, that leaves one. Strategy under that one, but I think, like you said, we've got another one that we just were talking about here. So maybe we just have everything. Under that one, and we don't even necessarily need this one, because we, you know, we're already getting that goal, yeah. Okay. Okay. So I think that any of the remaining strategies, new ideas and so forth are related to open space or recreation. Or or public health. Um, so I think with that, we're probably all set. Until next time, I don't know that we're gonna get through, let's see, there's a number of them here. Um, so we might have to just.
Those are gonna be easier, though, honestly, like, who would be against continuing wastewater evaluation? Nobody.
All right, so those will go, those will go more quickly. Well.
Sorry, here's the other question, yeah. I was just gonna bring up, there's the four C is, the the description is that it's recreational, but. There actually are a number of items under there that aren't just recreational.
I mean, like the the biking is more transportation.
Yeah. So that may be worth just. Again, either we're wording the goal or.
Hmm.
We, you know, moving around some of those.
Yeah, I would reword the goal, to be honest. I wouldn't just have it be recreational, could be for any purpose.
And I could like call it develop the city's network of of walking and biking facilities.
Hmm. Okay, so I know Rick's gotta go, how, um, but do others or others? On their last brain cell or or I'm 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 able to keep going or or if you wanna call it a night, I'm good either way.
I'm pretty done, not gonna lie. I'm also starving.
Yeah, I'd hate to have Rick not including the rest of the conversation, so.
All right, well, thank you, that was a really productive conversation. Thank you so much. I know it's a. A little bit of a slog to get in to so much detail, but it's really, you know, important for just at that. At that stage in the process, but this is really um, thoughtful and. Productive, so I look forward to continuing the conversation on the on the sixth, then in the meantime. You know, I'll I'll come back at another iteration um, with the word Smith version, and we can continue on then.
Right, and I guess the, just in closing, this, the overarching sort of softening the action words. And evaluating, you know, and replacing with evaluating or exploring just as a general. Um, just review, right? I mean, so we'll probably get caught up in the other section with similar language, but. Um. So we don't have to stop at every sentence to, you know, change a word and, you know, in in a strategy.
Yeah.
And check.
Yeah, I made a little comment in the side to kind of take a take a pass through.
Document wide, right?
Hmm.
Perfect. All right, well, thanks, everybody, for your time. This has been productive.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. So we'll need it, we we need a roll call for adjournment.
Mister Chair, I move that we adjourn.
I have a motion, I need a second. A motion by Jane Ramsden, second by Doug Cook, roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan.
Yes.
Member Ramsden.
Yes.
Member Cook.
Yes.
Member Henry.
Yes.
And member Rosen.
Yes.
Have a good night.